Look at that, the clock turned to six, six o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. With that, I want to welcome everybody to the February ninth regular meeting. Members of the board are participating tonight in person from the TID boardroom located at three, three, three East Canal Drive in Turlock. Members of the public may also participate in person, utilize the Zoom's webinar feature or by telephone. Members of the public attending virtually will have the opportunity to write public comment via the webinar or phone features. For those participating via Zoom, please click the raise the hand button on your screen. For those participating via phone, please dial star nine on your keypad. Once your name or other identifying information is called by the board secretary, your line will be unmuted and public comment can begin. For now, let's begin with the flag salute, please.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we get the roll call the board members, please.
Here.
Alternate Director Casey.
Here.
Director Kieza.
Here.
Director Croker.
Here.
Alternate Director Lindo.
Here.
Alternate Director McBride. Vice Chair Juritzma.
Here.
And Chair Alamo.
Here.
In the item D, public comment period. Interested persons in the audience are welcome to introduce any topic within the agency's jurisdiction. No action may be undertaken on the item not appearing on the posted agenda, except the board may briefly respond to the comments. Refer the matter to staff or request it be placed on a future agenda. Is there any public comment? Any public comment online?
There are no hands raised online.
Thank you. Moving right along. Pursue staff updates, budget update. Michael Clipper.
Good evening, everyone. For the West Turlock Sub Basin account. For the month of January, we started out with five hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents, and that was the ending balance. And then for the basin account, we have the, this is combined funds with the West and East Turlock Sub Basin. We started out with six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. We received money from DWR for reimbursement of sixty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty cents. Leaving us with a balance of Janu- and January thirty-first of seven hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and ninety and seven cents. Any questions?
Questions? Looks good. Thank you. Continue on staff updates. That committee update, Michael Cook.
Good evening, board members. My name is Michael Cook. I'm the Chair of the West Rock Sub Basin Technical Advisory Committee. And just so the new board members knows, that's a committee made up of staff members from your agencies who work on the day-to-day preparation of the plan. Plan implementation, then bring you items together for your consideration at the policy level. So we've been, we've been busy in the, since your last meeting. We've been working on the environmental impact report that was prepared as a result of the groundwater sustainability plan. So in order to implement the projects and programs in the plan, we had to develop an environmental impact report pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA. The comment period was from July twenty-seventh to September twenty-second that completed. We had, I would consider minimal comments with the consultant, the technical advisory committee has reviewed the comments, made responses to comments. And a final version of the environmental impact report is complete. The tack will be reviewing that next Tuesday. And once we're done with our review, we'll forward it to the board for adoption and approval. And we're looking at sometime in March, most likely. So we're trying to coordinate with the West Rock and East Rock. So adopt that environmental impact report at the same time, and Jennifer will be working on scheduling that date. We're also working on our annual report. Once we've adopted a plan, we have to do an annual report to review the data and our actions to see if we're moving towards or making progress towards sustainability. It's due to Department of Water Resources on April first. The consulting team is drafting the annual report right now. And there's a, a working group of, of a subset of the West Rock and East Rock Technical Advisory Committees. They'll be reviewing that document in mid-March, and we will bring it back to you at a later date for review. We continue to monitor water levels. We do that semi-annually. We just did the full measurements in October. We're doing the spring measurements in later in March. We do struggle a little bit to obtain measurements in production wells and drought years because wells keep running because of the drought. And we can't turn them off to get a static reading. So one of the things we're working on through a grant is to put in more dedicated monitoring wells. They just sit there, they are production wells that we can monitor at any time. We hope obviously in March that the water levels come back up a little bit. Ordinarily, what I've seen in my career is it usually takes a full irrigation season to see that change. So you have obviously percolation, you've got recharge happening right now. But then, once we have a full irrigation season, the service supplies come in and the growers tend to pump less during the years where they have a full allotment. We start to see the groundwater levels come back up. We'll keep you apprised of what's going on in the aquifer in our region. We're working on what's called a minimum threshold exceedance acting plan. So in our, in our plan, we develop minimum thresholds for, to, to avoid undesirable results. So maintaining groundwater levels, making sure we're not taking water out of storage, making sure we're not impacting the rivers, we're not affecting water quality. Those types of things, we set kind of levels at which we don't want to, to have impacts. By, by law, we have to develop an action plan. So if we see groundwater levels starting to decline, for instance, beyond what we imagined. What would our actions be? How would we investigate that? What steps would we take? How would we, how would we mitigate that impact? And so we're working on the action plan right now, or we'll start soon. And similarly, we have to develop a drinking water mitigation plan. And one of the big concerns with Sigma or Sustainable Groundwater Management Act is to make sure that residents in rural areas who rely on well water aren't impacted by decline groundwater levels. So we have to develop a mitigation program. DWR is developing, or the state is developing a guidance document. We'll be looking at that and developing our, our own based on that DWR guidance. You'll be hearing an update in a little bit about the grant we submitted based on your guidance at your last meeting. And then the State Department of Water Resources last spring did what's called airborne electromagnetic magnetic surveys, where you flew a helicopter over our region. And basically took equivalent of like an MRI of the groundwater in our region to look at water depths. Depth to groundwater, water quality, that type of thing. That data is available. Our consultants will be working with that. And hopefully in the future, we can bring you something back to look at kind of that MRI view of what's going on under our feet in, in the sub-basin. DWR has been looking at revisions to plans that were developed a few years ago. And then also the plans i- in the same round that we were in the 2022 plans, the, the basins aren't critically overdrafted. They have actually released approvals for four groundwater sustainability plans in the Sonoma-Napa area. So they've been getting to those. They've given approval. We don't expect to hear anything until the end of the year. They have until actually January of 2024. But we expect something towards the end of the year to find out how well our plan matches up to the state legislation and guidelines. So that's the report from your Technical Advisory Committee. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Want to ask, do they give you any direction before they give you written comments? Do you know? Is it?
Valerie?
Yes, so there's a process by which before you, if you get that a pass and a fail is called adequate or inadequate.
Yeah, Valerie, you probably want to speak at the podium because we have people online, right Jen? Okay, so there you go. Sorry.
So the DWR review will determine whether the plan's adequate or inadequate. And so far for the 2020 plans, any plan, they have, they, they decided to tell those plans they were incomplete before they were inadequate. So if you're going to get a pass, you could easily just get a pass and, and you can move on. But it looks like DWR's practice before they give you a fail is to give you an incomplete, at which point you have a hundred and eighty days to correct those deficiencies. And then they will get back to you. And that's the process that is still ongoing for twelve different basins in the 2020 plans. So there is kind of a long process. If you're going to get a fail, you get to, to correct yourself before. You get that absolute fail. But as Michael noted, if you're going to get a pass, that could come faster and quicker and with less warning.
Thank you.
Again, just say, I know we have some new members. I'll give you my card after the meeting. Contact me anytime by anything related to Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. I'd be happy to help out. Thank you.
Debbie? Proceed on with the round two Sigma implementation grant application update.
Um, so as Michael mentioned, the, the GSAs within the sub-basin authorized an application to the Department of Water Resources for a grant application last year. And so this is a summary of that process. Let's see. Oh, sorry about that. Um, so DWR released the grant solicitation package in early October of last year. Initially, it was intended for applications to be submitted by November fifteenth. So it was a very short application period. And DWR chose to extend that for a month and gave everybody even more time to pull it all together. All of the high and medium priority basins within California were eligible to apply. There was over two hundred billion dollars that is, was available under this grant for a wide variety of either implementation or planning projects that were able to be funded. The, the guidelines required one application per sub-basin. So we worked with our adjoining GSA within the Turlock sub-basin to prepare the application. And the West Rock Sub Basin GSA was the applicant on behalf of the sub-basin. It required, the grant required that requests be anywhere from one to twenty million dollars. So that's a much larger amount than the previous grants that have been available on the one million dollar range. And there was no cost share required. So those are kind of the, the general guidelines for the, that grant process. The application that we submitted was submitted on December fifteenth. It was just over the twenty million dollar mark. And so I'll talk a little bit about how that would work. The award would be no more than the twenty million dollars. But the last project that was incorporated put us over the twenty million. And so that's okay, as long as we're just requesting the, the twenty. And that it included a variety of, of projects that were then compiled into several components, and we'll talk about that in a minute. In total, there were eighty-two applications for a total of seventy-eight or seven hundred and eighty million dollars. And so it was significantly more than the, the overall amount that's available. So it's a very competitive process. DWR expected that. You know, they looked at all the GSPs and all of the work that's going to be needed within California. And so they recognized that, that there's a lot of need out there. And so they've asked the applicants, along with the grant application, to prioritize their projects and components. And we'll talk a little bit about how that worked for ours as well. So as they are ranking all of the applications, they will likely partially fund some, if not all of, of the grant applications to spread the, the money around, just depending on how the rankings go. So we'll see how that works as, as the information unfolds. Once, once DWR has reviewed all of the applications, which is what they're in the process of doing now. They, the department also extended their, their review process because there's a lot to go through. And so initially, they, we were supposed to hear back in the spring of, of this year. We're not expecting to hear back until August. So and then contracting will happen for those that receive funding towards the end of this year. So, so this is a list of, of the different components that are included within the Turlock sub-basin grant application. Grant administration, which is required to be the first component. So that includes the coordination with the department. All of the invoicing and the reporting that's required with these types of grants. And I have to tell you, in, in administering the two existing grants that we have for the sub-basin, it's a lot of work. And this grant will be more complicated because it's a larger grant and it has multiple components. And so there's invoicing and reporting on each individual component. So you compile all of the stuff for each component, then you compile it all for the grant and then you submit it in. And so it's, it's, it's more work. So you'll see that the dollar amount is, is higher than in the previous applications, but it's a much larger grant request. The recharge master plan is the next component, so the next priority component. And that is designed to provide the sub-basin with a, a roadmap to how to do recharge within the sub-basin to achieve sustainability. It includes updates, some minor updates to the groundwater model to, to use it for a planning tool for the analyses. It includes analyzing the new AM data that DWR has made available. I believe Mr. Cook described that earlier. And in understanding how recharge may occur within the sub-basin. It includes some feasibility studies and pilot projects, so testing technologies and getting things in the ground and see how they're working and incorporating that into the planning document. And, and it also includes some outreach. So the idea here is, is to provide a more detailed plan and approach to recharge that can then be incorporated into and the, the five-year update of the GSP as well as implemented over the course of, of the next twenty years to, to really achieve sustainability. So I'll, I'll stop there for a minute in case there's any questions and then I can move on to the next components. I know that's a, a big chunk. Okay. The next component deals with monitoring instrumentation. It will install monitoring wells within the sub-basin to address some data gaps. And, and as well as transducers, they'll be monitoring wells along the rivers as well as within the western portion of the sub-basin and a couple over on the east. And, and the idea here is to move us away from relying upon production wells for our monitoring network. Mr. Cook mentioned that in drought years, it's difficult sometimes to be able to access some of the wells that we've monitored in the past. And that's problematic because we're judged on making sure that we have data to be able to demonstrate that we're achieving our sustainability goals. And so it's important to have a, a robust monitoring network. The transducers will provide ongoing data. So we'll be able to see if, if a well is being influenced by a, a neighboring well, you know, and it's not really representative of, of the area, which is what it's intended to be. You know, that would be helpful as well as, as knowing kind of is, if, if it's, if it's kind of generally where water levels are, or if, if there's other things going on. And so, so that ongoing data would be extremely helpful. We'd also be purchasing meters for the Easter Luxa Basin GSA. They wish to install meters on their, their wells to be able to help do some of the things that they're needing to do over in their area. So that would purchase the meters and then they would be installed with separate funding. We'd also be purchasing ET data and land use data similar to maybe land IQ, or there's several different options for that. And that will help feed into our understanding of land use and pumping. And it will help assist Easter Lock as they're looking at allocations and, and those types of things over, over on their portion of the basin. And then lastly, there's outreach under that component. Then the fourth component deals with implementation activities to address the other data gaps. And so a lot of these are, are smaller items that were identified within the GSP that, that needed to be done. A data management system, a more robust data management system to move the sub-basin forward as we, as we compile data and, and need to provide data to, to different things. At the minimum threshold exceedance plan that Mr. Cook was, was talking about is eligible for funding. Any work that, that was between October of last year through, I think, April of 2026 was eligible for funding. So we incorporated that as well. We could be reimbursed for it. The domestic well mitigation program that is planned for this coming year could be funding, funded under this as well, although we, we also have funding in our current fiscal budget. So we're not constrained to wait until we hear back on grant funding for that. We've also identified the need for a groundwater dependent ecosystem or GDE. Further analysis of, of that. That's one of the things we required to do under the, the GSP. And we did an initial survey, but identified that more work probably needed to be done to, to verify some things. And there were some comments made in, to the, the, the GSP from, from those that were reviewing it and spinning comments before we adopted it. It's also likely one of the things that the Department of Water Resources will be looking at and wanting people to move forward with understanding more about. So we had added some analysis and some study and some data gathering on some sample locations along the rivers where most of our groundwater dependent eco, potential groundwater dependent ecosystems were located to better understand those regions and then develop a plan for how to further address that into the future. So that's also a part of this component. We would also be making significant improvements to our existing groundwater model. As many of you may recall, as we developed our model and, and we used it in developing our GSP, we recognized that it's a planning level model. The, the model grid doesn't match the GSAs and some of the watershed features. It was developed by the department at a higher level, and then we're using it in more detail. And so having an improved model would help move this sub-basin forward as, as, as we have to evaluate different things for meeting our sigma requirements. In particular, we would be gathering some river bathymetry data to better incorporate the river and surf, the surface water and groundwater interactions, which are, are real key for the sub-basin. And so, so we'd be improving our understanding there as well. And then lastly, we'd be funding the annual reporting, which is a requirement of sigma and then doing some outreach as well. So again, each of these components kind of have some outreach components included also. So, so that's the fourth component of this grant. And the last one was a shovel-ready project that is within the Turlock Irrigation District. It's, it's the series main regulating reservoir. It would fund a portion of that. And that reservoir is currently in construction. It will reduce spills and groundwater pumping within the sub-basin and increase operational flexibility within the district and recharge opportunities. And so incorporating that project at the end will allow for some, some funding for that project. If, if we're fully funded, if not, then, then that project would not be funded likely. But, but it would also, it also provides a, you know, some on-the-ground things. So we have several of those incorporated into here, the pilot projects, for example, the monitoring wells, and then the shovel-ready project at the end. And so we tried to have some planning and some actual implementation projects incorporated within this as well, kind of well-rounded. Any questions?
If, if I could ask one question on the monitoring and instrumentation, I know on the east side that they already had monitoring wells and transducers, but the meters is a new component from what I remember. Are they going to meter wells that they had transdu- transducers on, or they're going to meter all the wells? Are moving towards?
They're, they're trying to, some, some pumping wells out there probably already have meters, but some may not. And so there, as I understand it, and, and I'm not actively engaged on the east side, but as the, the request was to be able to fund the purchase of meters that could be then placed on wells. But as you may know, that's very specific to each individual well. It has to be designed in a way. So it has a a straight portion, a pipe and different things, and all wells are kind of a little different in their configuration. So we didn't want to get into the installation because it could be problematic. And so that's why we went with the purchase of meters that then could be installed through a program that East Turlock will be developing. And lastly, I just wanted to show you what the numbers look like. So this has each of the components as ranked by priority that we just talked about. And, and so the grant administration, like I mentioned, is a little higher than in the past because we've only had million-dollar projects. And so it was a maybe twenty thousand dollars or something like that. But this, this will be much more complicated if it's fully funded. If it's partially funded, it's my understanding that there might be an opportunity to shift some of the numbers around. And so it's not so heavy in the, in the administration component. But it, we were instructed to include the amount that we thought would be needed for the entire asking. And that's, that's where we landed.
If it's partially funded, Debbie, does DWR tell us what pieces are funded, or do we get to move the funding around how we see most beneficial?
Well, hard, they, they asked us to prioritize for a reason. So they're, that, you know, so if, if we find a land in a padded worry, for example, where, so they rank, like, so, so the top ranked ones get a twenty, for example, and then or a ten, if, if you're, you know, giving them numbers. And then, then the next one is nines. And then they'll look at the total amounts that are available for each of those. And then maybe they, maybe they get down to the eights where they could be funding partial of that, part of, of that one. Then in that case, if, if we're eligible for ten million dollars, then likely it would just be the first three components that would be funded. But because the administration would be less complicated, you know, maybe a little bit could be shifted from the grant administration to another component. But that's why they asked for the priority. So they would, you know, say, you know, you're eligible for these three components to be funded, kind of a thing up to that. And then you might be able to move things around a little bit, but not a lot.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
Herb, we got you with a communication outreach update.
I think Debbie may have started a presentation, but it's, it's not mine. So I was gonna say, unfortunately, you have to look at me instead of the presentation. But good evening, directors. I have three quick items for you. The first of which is by way of update, we are working with the Department of Water Resources on a translation services pilot project that they're doing up and down the state. Specifically, where we've been talking with two of their contractors that they've contracted to perform this contract. And we've been working with them and been talking internally because what they're looking to do, at least through July, they're trying to wrap up this pilot through July. They're trying to go up and down the state and within various GSAs, not even limiting it to sub-basins, but GSAs within sub-basins. And they're offering translation services for either in-person meetings, hybrid meetings, or online-only meetings. And so we've started kicking the tires with them, talking about what that could look like. The, some tack members have started discussing when we would want to do that, what type of meeting, what languages, all those initial conversations have been going on. And so are the task in front of us right now is to identify a meeting sometime between now and July. It could be a workshop. It could be a governance meeting like yours or others. And whatever we have an agenda that would, you know, foster the best conversation. And having translation services be provided by the contractor for free essentially to us so that we could do that. And we're talking about what meeting we should do that. And we're talking about what meeting we should do that at. And so that's something that we've started discussing. Of course, once we do that, we need to start getting in touch with, you know, people that speak that language and trying to get them recruiting them to come to the meeting so that we could, you know, utilize those translation services to the best way possible. And so that is one thing we have been working on. Also, we've contacted the East Turlock Sub Basin G S A and their representatives because they also may want to take advantage of this pilot project and be able to have translation services provided for free by the state for one meeting. Afterwards, it'd be interesting to see where the pilot program goes. It sounds from D W R like the program will be funded and successful. We'll see where the state budget lies this year come May. But we would love to be able to take advantage of that in perpetuity if possible, too. So that is the first item. The second item is, on the same note of translation, we are looking into the turlockcrownwater.com website and having it translated into, you know, other languages or multiple languages. Obviously, with by the numbers with some 25 to 30% of, you know, households in California speaking Spanish primarily in the house. That's the first, the first translation language we probably look at, of course, in Stanislaus and Marseth Counties, there's other languages that are utilized a little bit less than Spanish in households. So we'd be looking into that. But we've looked into the website and this is our, again, our sub basin website. It's not just for the West Turlock Sub Basin G S A. Although we administer it in in the West Turlock Sub Basin G S A for the entire sub basin for both G S A's. So we've been looking into services. There's free services that are out there, but the translation tends to be a little a little kind of spotty and not customizable. If there's things we wanted to change, and we started looking at some paid services as well, just to give you an indicator of costs for these types of things. The vendor that works primarily with our website vendor that we use exclusively, they provide services for a single language for 10 to up to 10,000 words on a website for $150 a year. And that cost would, if we were to pursue that path, would probably be spread across another G S A since the Easter Luxa Basin G S A also uses our website. So we're but looking into that, whether we want to do one language or multiple languages. We already fall well under the 10,000 word limit to pay $150 a year. We're about a third of that on our website at current. So we're looking into that and hopefully we'll have something to update you about that at your next meeting as well. Lastly, just a a note of update that the Easter Luxa Basin G S A, we've been working with them, getting information on the website. They are looking and they're producing materials now to host a third of a series of workshops they've been doing with their their ratepayers. And this workshop they're scheduling for March 7th. The details are still being determined. It would probably be in the morning. They've held them at Cortez Hall. But this would specifically be called a Pumping Management Framework and Pilot Program Workshop. And so I wanted to make you all aware of that and we'll update the website for that as well. And we're still getting information. They're still developing agenda materials and postcards and mailings, but they've been pretty active on the workshop outreach front related to fees with the 218 process they had and everything like that. And so this would follow along in that suit. I think that's it for me. I'll just note, you know, when it comes to translating items, you know, our website, the turlockgroundwater.org website is in its current form is three years old. In total, it's some five years old since sigma was passed or since the G S A's were formed. So we designed it in English only. But now it's probably around the time to start looking into providing at the very least a Spanish translation that works well into the site in order to increase outreach and and all of all of things that come along with that. So we also have, we're not completely English only. We have fact sheets on our our main paramount fact sheets that we have for the sub basin are translated into Spanish. We have our sigma 101 video that we produced that's just still pretty relevant. It's a five minute video. It was produced in English and Spanish. So we're not entirely English only, but a lot of the text on the website that's there is primarily in English. And so we're looking to upgrade that for what would probably be a very low cost. So those are my three items. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Okay, well, thank you.
Next on the agenda, the consent calendar. Since there's only one thing in the consent calendar, I won't let anybody remove anything from the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion for the minutes.
So moved.
There's a second. Probably moved in second for the consent calendar. Any further discussion or comments, changes? Harry, none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At the same time. Thank you. Motion passes. Agenda item G, moving on to election of board officers. And I think Valerie is gonna stand up here and finish the meeting for us. So we'll let you start.
Thank you, Valerie Ginkade Council. Nice to see old members and new members. For a agenda item G1, it's the election of board officers every two years. This governing board per its joint powers agreement and bylaws needs to elect a chair, a vice chair and a secretary. The chair and vice chair do need to be elected members of the board and the secretary is able to be a staff member. So for the last two years, Chair Alamo and Vice Chair Juritzma have been serving. There are no term limits. And so at the pleasure of the board, you can do individual nominees and motions or as a slate. But I will turn it over to the board to elect Chair, Vice Chair and Appoint a Secretary.
Treasurer as well?
The treasurer is actually, the Turlock Irrigation District says it shall remain as treasurer until we have an outside treasurer. So we don't need to appoint, but you can include that in the slate if you'd like.
Thank you, Valerie. Pleasure.
So I am willing to make a motion if we take it as a slate. Is that okay with everyone? If we do it as a slate, I just want to make sure we have common currents. So with, and Jennifer Land has been our secretary for irrigation district as a whole, but Michael, you've been doing a great job. Turlock Irrigation District obviously has the most at stake and they have the, if we're going to be successful, they're going to have the most at stake there, too. So I think continuing with the chair being from Turlock Irrigation District, I think, is is only fair. And I think Curtis has done a great job as our vice chair. So I'd put up the same slate we currently have in a motion. Joe Alamo serving another two years as chair. Curtis Juritzma as the vice chair and Jennifer as our secretary.
Second. So we got a slate properly moved and seconded. Is there any further nominations? Harry, none. Should we take a roll call vote on that or?
I'm happy to. I can go ahead and reiterate that the nomination is to appoint Joe Alamo as the chair, Curtis Juritzma as the vice chair and Jennifer Land as the secretary. And just for a point of clarification, since we had it on the agenda, that Turlock Irrigation District will remain as the treasurer with Michael Clipper serving in that position. So I have a motion by Director Chiesa, a second by Director Bixel. And I'll go ahead and call the rule unless there's any additional questions. Director Alvarez. Director Bixel.
Yes.
Alternate Director Casey.
Yes.
Director Chiesa.
Yes.
Director Croker.
Yes.
Alternate Director Lindo. Alternate Director McBride. Vice Chair Juritzma.
Yes.
And Chair Alamo.
Yes.
Very much.
Thank you. See, there's not a big
Are you willing to serve another term?
Like I said, Valerie is staying up here, ready to roll. Appointment of Technical Advisory Committee Officers.
All right, that's right. Also pursuant to the J P A, this board may appoint a chair and vice chair of the TAC Technical Advisory Committee that you heard from earlier. That group met and has a recommendation, I believe, that Michael Cook should from T I D would be happy to remain and the group was happy to support him remaining as chair and Karen Morgan from the City of Series as vice chair. That has been working well and that is an informal recommendation from that group. But of course, you as the board may take any action you wish. So I'll turn it over to the board.
Motion to approve.
All seconded. Probably moved and seconded. We will take another voice vote since we're on voice vote, voice vote time right now.
Absolutely. So the we will be appointing Michael Cook as the chair of the Technical Advisory Committee and Karen Morgan as the vice chair of the Technical Advisory Committee. I have a motion by sorry, just one second. I wanted to update. And then I have a second by Curtis. Thank you very much. Okay, for our rule call. I have Director Alvarez. Director Bixel.
Yes.
Alternate Director Casey.
Yes.
Director Chiesa.
Yes.
Director Croker.
Yes.
Alternate Director Lindo. Alternate Director McBride. Vice Chair Juritzma.
Yes.
And Chair Alamo.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You. Moving on, agenda item three, Fair Practical Practices Commission Statement of Economic Interest, Form 700.
Sorry, this is just an informational item, but as you may know, the Fair Political Practices Act requires all boards, including this one, to adopt a conflict of interest code. We have adopted that code and it includes requirements to fill out a Form 700 form. I'm sure that some of you are familiar with these delightful and engaging forms that we all love to do. Everyone on this board pursuant to our conflict of interest code must fill out this statement of financial interest form. The way this works is you fill it out, you sign it, you provide it to the secretary. Secretary keeps those. You need to provide it by April 1. Is that right?
April 3rd this year.
April 3rd this year. And although we do not turn them in, if we're audited, we need to have them all on hand by that date. So just a friendly reminder, if you have questions about your Form 700, feel free to ask either Secretary Land or myself, happy to guide you. But I'm I'm sure that many of you are are familiar with them and know how to do them. And the biggest thing is to get them in. Thanks.
And I'll follow up with a formal email that provides some information similar to what Valerie just provided as well as you know, some information regarding the positions, the the agency name and when to have those in by and where to submit them. So you'll get the formal email with that information as well.
Questions? Sounds good. Moving on, comments on the board. Is any comment from any board members?
Welcome to the board, the new board members and alternate. It's nice to see you. And we even have an alternate, Cassie Abram, city councilwoman is is paying attention, which is awesome.
Welcome.
And we zip through item G2, but just as someone who goes to those TAC meetings as well, I think Michael and Karen do an excellent job. And I'm glad we put them back in that role because they're really the the heart of of what gets the information to us and and they do that very well. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session. We have one item to discuss. Conference with legal counsel anticipate litigation.
So moved.
There's a second. Probably moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any comments? See none all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So at the same time. We are now on closed session. Do we have anybody that has to leave the room at this time? We're going to stay here?
Um. Considering that we have others in the room, we could do one of two things. We can either remain here, but there may be a few that we would have to ask to wait into a different area. Or we can move upstairs to our canal 203 conference room, which is a little bit of a larger space. So I'll leave that up to the board and or staff where they feel more comfortable. I don't believe we have any presentations or any slides that we need to show, so it's just going to be discussions. So wherever it would be most most comfortable.
Valerie, what do you prefer?
If it's fine with everyone, we can stay here and ask those who are not included in closed session to wait outside until we report out. And I'm sure that you will look at the online presence as well. Great.
We'll go ahead and mute everything in the room and then I'll show a few where we've got some seating right outside.
I would like to welcome everybody back. Looks like we have Michael coming in. So welcome back. I'd like to report out a closed session that there's no items to report out a closed session. And with that, I'd like to move the meeting adjourned at 7:22. And we will see you guys next time. Thank you.